I want to call this meeting to order. And if you would all stand with me, for flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks everybody for attending. And as everybody is quite aware, we have gone through a little ice age here in the last few days and had a real ice storm with a lot of damage. It's the worst ice storm I have seen and way of damage. And so we now have, what, oh, number three, any assistance is designed to be heard. Not hearing anybody. We'll go on to number four, the consideration, possible action to approve minutes of October 15, 2020. Do I hear it?
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we are on to item number five, consideration, possible action to declare an emergency due to the ice storm occurring October 26 to 28, 2020. As we all know, the, now, the governor passed the emergency declaration. Monday is our turn.
So this is a declaration to establish Logan County and how.
You want to build this thing?
Yeah, so this will be, this will help. I'll send it to the state. Hopefully, I'm hopeful that we will see some FEMA assistance at some point that will qualify. For FEMA, they do public assistance, which goes to cities, towns, and counties, and then they do individual assistance, which helps people individually. I don't know if we will get individual assistance, but I am hopeful that we will get public assistance. So that would help reimburse, picking up, and burning, and different things like that. Anyway, it's not a fast process, as you guys know. If we decided to use like a contractor or different things, there are definitely certain steps that we have to follow. One of our big deals right now is going to be DEQ approved sites to take, and District One and District Two, you guys have both DEQ approved sites for your air curtain. We just need to document and take pictures.
I think you're wrong. In one and three.
Or one and three, I'm sorry, yeah, one and three, I'm sorry.
David, if you would kind of keep your eyes open, and you might even ask if there's any grants out there for another air curtain that we might be able to get.
Okay.
Or maybe even a wood chipper through this emergency deal.
Okay. If I hear something, I definitely.
Really, what I was thinking about more like a mulching head go on a skid steer. That would really speed us up. With, with that, I'll second Monty's motion to approve the declaration, the disaster declaration. With that second, I'd also like to make a comment. We've been getting a lot of calls, not only us, but our representatives, Senator Hall and I talked yesterday, he's even been getting calls. We probably got, Cassidy's probably fielded 50 calls in the last couple of days on wanting to know about debris pickup and that sort of stuff. So I've talked with Troy, and today we'd like to put something out on our website that talks about that. Along those lines, I've got, I've got a statement from District One. This is, this is how we'll do, we're going to do the following for the residents in District One in our county. There's like four steps here. First of all, the statement is, will assist all residents in District One who resided in the unincorporated areas of our county to clean up this latest storm debris. Number two, we have begun clearing the latest ice storm debris from our county mile line roadways. Opening and maintaining the main county roads is our first priority. This will take several weeks to complete, probably months, probably a month or so after looking at some of the roads. Item three, next, we will move to the urbanized and residential areas where the county has road, rideaway authority. That's where the neighborhoods that we've adopted to assist them with their maintenance of their roads. Residents in these areas should cut tree debris in six-foot sections and stack them next to the roadway. The county will come by and remove the debris as we work through that area. Number four, all residents who live in the unincorporated areas of Logan County, District One, can bring their tree debris to the county barn for disposal. May take as long as two to three months, maybe longer, but we will get to everyone in time. Marvin Getman, Logan County, Commissioner, District One.
District Three, I mean, we'll just have our yard open for people to dump debris in our yard, and we'll be open on Saturday from eight to four.
Yep.
This Saturday?
Yeah. This Saturday is fine.
You're more of a rural area, you have, yeah, that makes sense, Monty.
I got 600 miles, I can't go pick up everybody.
Well, and I think so many of your residents are able to burn themselves.
Right.
Exactly.
We have a lot more urbanized areas and.
You have a plan?
This, this, this is true, that's the same thing, but unfortunately, we cannot burn in our yard, the air curtain incinerator. Any ditch we did would be too close to a 24-inch gas, high-pressure gas pipeline, and we cannot get authorization to burn that underground. It's, it's just too close to that pipe, and we would transfer heat. It's very hot pit. We got a way with a little bit on burning above ground, but we simply don't have the capacity to deal with this such debris at this time, but we're working on a plan, see if we can do something.
So what I'd like to do is I'm going to prepare a flash in the website. I wanted to include all three districts' information. Monty, is this this Saturday only, or?
No, no, we'll do next Saturday as well.
Okay. It'll be the 31st, and then, okay, eight to four. Do you have a specification, you want them cut to what size?
Don't bury me.
Do you?
Don't want to burn me on that.
Okay.
Bet.
Mike, can you utilize the land we own out of Meridian to do any of that?
We would have to get a road out to it. I think we might be able to do that. I think that's going to be part of our plan for being able to deal with all the debris. It is out there in Meridian. I would like to develop that. So we're working on all the above, but right now, we've got to get these roads cleared up. There's even additions where they're still having issues getting in and out of the additions, and so we're just hard to edit out there, pushing everything to the side of the road and, and getting them open. And that's our first priority. So then we'll come pick stuff up and see how we're going to deal with it. One of the things that we can take advantage of, and I don't know if you've got folks out here, I'm sure you do, Monty, but some landowners that would allow the county to bring debris on, onto their, onto their property to dispose of. We've got a few that I talked to before this. We were going to clear some, some county roads, ditch lines, right, clear the trees out of them to open the ditches up a little bit, and we've got, we had a few volunteers to help stack and that kind of stuff. So one of the things that I would do here formally today is appeal to some of our county landowners, the big landowners, who have the area to, to stack and burn that kind of stuff and assist the county in that manner. That's, that's another option that we have as well. Now, we, we would have to formalize that in writing, you know, to be able to go onto their property, to bring that onto their property and get their agreement in writing to do that. But that's another way that we could, we could get rid of a lot of this, because there's, man, I, there are million tons of that stuff out there in our county that's on the ground right now, and we were going to have to do something.
I asked David Bullock, the city of Guthrie is going to open up their landfill and let the citizens, you know, utilize that as well, but he didn't think they would.
I don't know right now, I don't know what they're going to do. But if you guys would, as you guys are working, please document the best you can, who's doing what, and kind of, so if we do get FEMA reimbursement, you guys choose to go through FEMA and try to get reimbursed. We know who ran what chainsaw, or who picked up whatever with Bobcat, or backhoe, or whatever, your grappling deal, kind of track all of that. From there, as you know, it's not, the FEMA process isn't a fast process, so we'll, we'll do what we can. Hopefully, the president will sign off, and I think the state, I believe, is hoping to send something to him today or sometime next week.
Along those lines, you mentioned the state. One of the things that's, that hasn't been forthcoming from the state is the 12.5% reimbursement for FEMA reimbursement. They haven't reimbursed the county since I've been here. The 12.5% that they're supposed to give the county for FEMA reimbursement. We've been through, this will be the fourth, if this one's approved, this will be the fourth FEMA disaster that I've been through as a county commissioner in this county. And the state has yet to cough up a dime in their 12.5%. We really need that addressed to figure out what's going on. But we're not the only ones. When I was up at the state Capitol, talking about the CIRP funds, that 12.5% from the state came up from other counties as well. So we're not the other, only ones that is missing that. They're not, they're not providing their 12.5% reimbursement to anybody. So what happens is FEMA reimburses the county maybe 75%.
75%.
The state's supposed to provide 12.5%, the county's supposed to eat the other 12.5%. But we end up, we end up putting 25% in because the state never pays us.
Correct.
Well, they're pretty speedy as well.
The state? Yeah. I've been here six years, and they haven't given us a dime yet.
So they're getting faster.
Yeah, I see. They've read the rules. Anyway.
And I, I have tried with the 12.5%, and I've met individually with some folks with the state.
But we got anything officially in writing back from them, why they're not doing that?
No, I don't have anything in writing. Just legislation's not, they, they don't get the funding.
Yeah, so it's an excuse, right?
Unfortunately. Unfortunately, but, yeah. I mean, I know you guys need it, and I wish you had all the money that was owed to you previously, but I can't make them.
Oh, we can't make them, but I would like to have something officially in writing from the state emergency manager, explain to them why they can't come up with the 12.5%.
I'll ask them for that.
They got pay raises.
Yeah, they did. So I did second the, the motion for this resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item six, consideration, possible action to approve ingress and egress agreement with Greg Woodin for District Number One, remove gravel from his property and establish quarter of 30, 16, northwest. So this is a resident that's wanting to be helpful. He's got gravel left over from oilfield activity and some other things on his property that he no longer needs, and is willing to donate that to the county for a road project around his property. And I recommend that we approve this. I, I make a motion that this be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration, possible action to approve final, final, whatever, equipment lease and contract default overpayment amount to Caterpillar Financial on Road Grader as ending in O, O, one, two, three. An extensive lease overpayment is required to settle this account because equipment can continue to be used and greatly exceed the total number of operating hours as outlined in original contract. This causing the county, Logan, to be in contract default on the original equipment lease contract. In order to correct the issue, the Logan County Board of Commissioners requires following information. Need to compute the specific contract overpayment to meet the agreement of the contract cap financial, and is reviewed and previously approved by the Logan County Assistant DA, original contract. I'm not going to read all this. Do you want me to read all this, Marvin? Okay. Whatever. Regardless, I'll need a little time to get those questions put together. I did have from your, from the last meeting, your request to know about the payments, and these are the payments on that, on that grader. We continue to make, make our payments until otherwise notified by local taxes, if they'll ever, they finally gave us an email back yesterday, and we are still now pursuing that. So we're following that, with phone calls and emails, and see what we can get in the way of compliance, so that we know how much we do owe on that grader, and get that paid off and get it out of our hair.
So they have not even replied back to you?
I, you know, I buzzed there, McDonald, why, we've been in contact with him since June, trying to get something going, something going, something going. Caterpillar Financial apparently is a totally different animal, and so we had been calling and emailing, and we finally got a email reply after we yesterday included the request by Commissioner Goodman of the financial status of that. I don't know if there's been some kind of interference in there. It seems like there might be, because things come out of the blue that we're not even, you know, nobody knows anything about. The Warren Cat Guy said he pushed this upstairs, and they had an evaluation, but they don't know what upstairs is going to do about it, so we're trying to get them to figure it out, whatever upstairs is. And, and so, yeah, it's a, it's, it's a.
Well, I would recommend that we quit making payments, and then maybe they'll start talking.
Well, and I thought about taking it down there and giving it to them.
I mean, I realize you're under contract, you make the payments, but they should be providing this information. I mean, June's been long enough.
Actually, I think our Assistant District Attorney said that we're required to make the payments up until the end of the amortization schedule, so only, only required by contract to make those, what is it, 60 months was the lease?
Something like that.
Whatever the lease, whatever the amortization lease was, but once that expired, we're not required to make payments anymore, but we are required to settle the account.
Correct.
And, and so that's, that's one of the things, and maybe it's best if we get the folks from Caterpillar here, so, so we can ask them, because this is all as, I know I'm not telling you something you don't already know, Mike, but it's contingent upon Caterpillar to come to an agreement with the board on, first of all, the appraised value. That was the first thing they were going to do. Back in late September, it was agreed that they would, that's when Lowell put out his guidance or agreement on, on how to proceed to close this thing out. And then one of the things that we needed from Caterpillar, they were going to do was provide an appraised value, so we could take the difference between the appraised value and balloon payment and figure all those things out.
And overpayment.
And the overpayments, and figure, and so the, the, the first thing that I think we need to come to agreement with Cat Financial or Caterpillar is, what, what do they believe the appraised value is? Because that's the only place the county has any latitude, right, to disagree. And, and what I mean by that is, at, at that point, once we understand what they believe the appraised value is, we have the opportunity at that time to get another appraisal done if we want to, right? If, if, if we believe that we can find one that's, that will appraise for a greater value will be to the benefit of the county rather than a lesser value, because we're taking the difference between $185,000 or balloon payment, whatever the assessed value is, what we're going to end up paying. So it's, it's, to me, it seems important that we get them nailed down on, on this assessed value. Now, Mike, my understanding was, when we had our meeting the first of October, that you reported to us that they were there that day, in your yard, that day, doing the assessment on that grader. And then we asked again on the 15th, and hadn't heard anything yet.
Correct.
And now we're at the end of the month, and apparently still haven't heard anything yet.
That is correct.
So we don't have an appra, we don't, they haven't given us an appraised value yet?
That is correct.
Okay. That, that's why, I, I believe we really need to get some folks from Cat Financial here at our next meeting. I mean, we got one coming up Monday. That is exactly what our request is in that email. We need an answer, and we need an answer now. Yeah, I understand. I'm saying, office is set, this needs to get squared away. Back in June, I thought we could just, you know, start up another lease, but at that time, I didn't know that I was not going to continue as commissioner. So now that falls on the board of commissioners. So the, the Board of Commissioners has, the Board of Commissioners has the ability to bring people to testify before our board, right? Troy, I'm going to ask you, is that something that we have the ability to do for like a vendor, to have them come and, and talk to us about this kind of stuff?
If you're asking if the board could, I'm trying to think of a good command, somebody to be here for a VOCC meeting, I've never seen that.
So, you know.
Yeah. There's, there's certain meetings, there's certain situations that that is allowed. The budget process, the excise board has the ability to call someone in. I, to answer your question, I've never seen in the law that that's an ability of this board.
Right.
Well, thanks for calling, asking.
Asking someone to be here and hearing them out is different, though, than I think.
Well, if, if they want paid, I mean, they need to show up and tell us.
Well, I'd say quit sending them payments.
There was a gentleman that was here, Mr. Wickersham. Is that who we're still dealing with?
I don't have to deal with him.
Huh?
I'm dealing with him.
Yes. I'll be.
That was just, he was here.
Okay.
And that was the name.
But he was Warren Galloway. I know a couple of guys down here.
Yeah, but he might be the, I think he was like regional manager or something, but he has a title.
I talked to Mr. Wickersham too, and he seemed agreeable to chat with us. I'm not sure.
I guess what I'm saying is through him, we might get the contact to Cat Financial to.
And I haven't invited him to show back up yet, but, you know, he, he also had agreed that this was the way forward, this was the step, the way forward to get this done, to get this resolved. And I, I, I'm not sure why Caterpillar is dragging their feet on wanting to get paid. That doesn't make sense for a company to not want to get paid. So even, even if they throw out a big number, they, I mean, they always want to get paid. I mean, they, they want to get paid, and one of the engineers do. I mean, I'm just going to put that out there.
Maybe. Well, we can sure call and recommend or request them to come. They don't, they don't have to, but we could certainly invite them.
So the, the other part of this, Mike, is, you know, we've got, we've issued a lot of different contracts yearly in, in June, and one of the things that we want to, we're going to put together in January is a process to prevent this from reoccurring again. It's, it's, it's interesting, though, there, there's, there's going to be some data that we're going to have to collect from all of us on our, on our lease purchase contracts, especially from outside agencies. I'm not so concerned with lease, lease purchase with our trust, because we're basically working with ourselves to do that and paying ourselves back. And we should know what we're charging ourselves to do that kind of work, and know what the requirements are for that. Because there are no hourly, we don't put hourly limits, or we just put a amortization schedule together and say, you know, pay until, until the end of the contract. But we, we are going to need to work that out, so there's some supplementary questions there that we appreciate your input on, if you can bring that back to us. I mean, you and your deputy have almost 30 years' experience at county commissioner work, so anything that you could provide back to us that would be a recommendation on how to avoid that would be helpful. Knowing that we've got, anytime we have a lease purchase on a piece of equipment, a big equipment like that, diesel equipment, they're required, we're required to send in oil samples periodically based on the number of hours. And, and understanding from Cat that that had been accomplished, and so there's, there's a process there that maybe we could look at as well on, on trying to figure out how to track the hours and, and that sort of stuff against the contract. So there are, there are a number of hours, and then there's the, the number of payments, and there may be some other, I don't know, like if we rent trucks, or maybe mileage limitations. I know there is on automobiles, if you lease purchase an automobile, it's, you know, so many years and so many miles, and if you go over the miles, you have to pay. Whereas on big equipment like this, if you go over the hours, you got to pay extra, and that's kind of where we're stuck today. But again, we'd appreciate any feedback you could provide us on that. And that's, that's all I got on it. So action. Monty, you're going to contact Caterpillar and see if you can get them here?
I'll call Jeremy and a couple of guys, and invite them, see what they say.
All right. Jeremy's who we've been coming, what have you called him?
Calder. Whatever it is.
All right then. I'm moving on to item eight, consideration, possible action to approve purchase order from CBR High Camp to the Railroad Yard Services in the amount of $59,200 for bid number 2021-9, rehab a bridge 198A in District Number Two. That is the bridge a quarter mile south of Highway 105 on Midwest Bogard. This is one you did seal bids on, that we ordered, okay. I moved with.
I'll second Marvin's motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You'll also need to sign a deal.
Motion carries. Item nine, consideration, possible action to approve interagency agreement between ODEC, DEQ, and Logan County for DEQ environmental officer grant in the amount of $15,000. Would yea?
Just the chairman's.
Yeah, this is, you know, our, our DEQ application, our grant award for the Trash Cop, we typically call it, does all our illegal dumping investigations and cleanups, stuff like that. I think $10,000 of the salary, $5,000 of it goes to equipment. And we also got a donation from, was it Echo?
Yes, sir.
Which was, we'll help out and continue this program for another year.
I'll move with. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10, consideration, possible action to approve resolution establishing 2021 employee insurance benefit.
So we did not budget for any increase to the $600 maximum provided to employees for the cost of health and old business and life insurance, so this is set up for just calendar
So this, the action is to approve the $600?
The maximum of $600.
The maximum of $600 per employee for calendar year 2021. I move we approve that.
I'll second Marvin's motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Here says aye. Item 11, consideration, possible action to approve detention transportation claims August 2020, $114.33, September 2027, $41.34.
I'll make a motion for a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item twelve. Consideration possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claim from Casey Gore and for the ACCO County claims.
This is in my district. Uh, he- he called me about it and really I think ACCO, they'll probably reject it, but I'm hoping they'll go after AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T put a, uh, underground box about six inches off one of our main blacktops. And he was actually pulling off the side of the road in his semi and his truck fell through the box and ruined his tires and some stuff on his frame. But, uh, I- I feel that AT&amp;T shouldn't have put their box there and they should be responsible.
Move with it.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And here's the money.
You know. I believe you, man. I've seen him do it before.
I mean, yeah, that's the edge of the blacktop and it's about six inches off.
And one of them little green boxes?
Well, it ain't too little. Oh, a little smaller than this desk, bro.
Oh, my.
We have nothing on item thirteen.
Nothing on thirteen. Item fourteen. Consideration possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
I'll make a motion with her, for one of my employees or any caller to be a receiving officer.
Yes.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item fifteen. Consideration possible action approved following department road crossing permits. We got Coxcom and ONG.
Move with it.
I'll second Marvin's motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You got a place at Cutgrass?
Yeah.
How about you?
I need about a four mile head start though, and then four and a half mile waste. And I need to be able to use my pickup truck.
That's right, I have my other three here too. Is it getting better?
Yes, sir. Every day, every day.
Good for you.
If I keep getting better, I might get back to where I was at before I had the surgery.
Oh, God, I don't know if I'm up there or not.
I know.
So, you like your first county commissioner meeting in Logan County? I guess this is your first one.
This is my first one. It's pretty good.
You're not asleep yet?
I was really hoping you'd have coffee. I left the house this morning.
We got some right after.
There should be some in the morning.
I hope so.
You don't have to tell me twice.
This $6 could.
Oh, well, I don't know if I need any.
We went down from 650?
Nope, she figured it out.
All right. Item sixteen. Consideration possible action on consent.
If her first priority was coffee, I kinda like her already.
I went and dug out my can of coffee. I was on both coffee on the stove in the morning.
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, I'm gonna take, you know, it is what it is. Person's gotta eat.
I'll survive the rest of it.
So, you say you're the new director of the 4H?
I'm not actually the county director. I am the new Ag 4H agent. Right now, our county director is an intern and his name is Chad Webb. He's out of Noble County.
So, just out of curiosity, what- what would your role be?
What would my role be? Right now, I am providing some, uh, programmings from the agriculture and the 4H side.
That's transfer. That comes up next.
Taking, 4H is a lot, a lot of my time right now. We are in the midst of speech contests and we just had our cupcake wars last weekend.
Cupcake wars?
Cupcake wars. They were, they were pretty good. They looked pretty delicious.
To be a retired military guy, I'm into both of those.
You're into both of those, well.
They're cupcakes and wars.
Yes.
I mean, they- they just have to judge them by- by the looks of them, but we can always alter the rules and you can come give them a taste test.
Well, I was wondering if maybe we could throw them to one another. That would be helpful.
Well, man, the sheriff would judge serval with a pie contest down there, so keep me in mind if you need another pie contest.
So, you guys have lots of experience.
I mean, that's unfortunate.
It's, it's a...
I'm all about the pie thing.
I think it's still, still the best.
Anything that has to do with eating papers, we're into.
You're into?
Yeah.
Okay.
And having an opinion about.
Oh.
Yeah.
We like public opinion.
We do. We don't want them to just ask us.
I haven't gotten too many opinions in my office yet, but I'm sure they're gonna break me in the middle.
I didn't make sure, Molly, did I get one?
You don't have to done that, Molly.
Judge knows.
Welcome to one of those, you got those missies.
I better not. Oh, missies will get me in trouble.
Those are the best.
They're the best. My daughter found out I was driving by missies every day and she thought that I should pick some up for the next morning for breakfast.
Where my granddaughters are.
Mom vetoed that. I did say donuts for breakfast every morning was a great choice. But they do have a killer sandwich for lunch.
I guess they have chicken salad sandwiches or something else.
I'm gonna have to give up on this, right? I don't mind.
Yeah, I'll bet. I ordered a sandwich from my cousin on the other night. Molly, that's good. They have them open on Saturday. Of course, public gonna adopt some of that too. A lot of, a lot of people absolutely have to work for a living, so they can't get out during the week.
And a lot of electric lines now aren't able to get in there and get them done. A lot of people not able to get in and out of their homes. The driveways. Yeah. Well, he had like four and a half inches, didn't he?
I think so, like on my house. I like that direction.
I like so as well. And I haven't looked at my radio yet this morning.
I was originally for Western, and they were measuring the RIs off the power line. It looks like it's five inches.
Then by that and a half, that's how much moisture that they'd say we got.
Too much.
Two and a half, uh, there. Yeah, it is.
Do you see her, what, RX on the lines there?
Well, it's all probably just global water.
RX here in Logan County, have you ever quit?
I don't know what it was. Uh, it's probably around three inches, something like that's what we've, what we got in some areas.
That's a lot.
Too much. Bad on the trees. Still have weeds on there.
What else can 2020 throw in?
I hope not a lot more.
So, what else can 2020 throw in?
Easy what you ask.
Kinda like the monkeys at the zoo. You don't know, wanna know what they throw at you. Sorry. I guess we're into consent agenda. Need to do some finger exercises before January. Don't get cramps.
Not jobs, somebody's gonna do it.
Signature stamps have been tried. They took longer.
Longer what?
Line it up. Three different stamps. So, they asked, that's a long time back, is, asked doing the stamps.
So, each commissioner would have their own stamp and just do it as a pen figure?
No, that was the thing. Every commissioner had their own stamp and then they were trying to align. They figured by the time they lined up where to stamp it, they already signed it, moved it on.
Actually...
I appreciate it.
Like you go through, Molly, Molly.
You actually can't.
I- I second that emotion. No, the audit duty takes seven to that, seven percent.
You must be the one in control of your signature.
So, they go through all these up here?
Pardon me?
Think they'll go through that?
Oh, yeah.
I never know what they're gonna look at. It's a new game or something they're here.
I'm sure you'll find something like that.
Well, you always give them something.
So, the fancy people in Combe County, they sign these after the meeting. They go through each one and sign it.
Oh, they get digital signatures.
Oh.
They apply them, but they still have to apply them.
Like this.
They heard, they heard. I just don't understand. People wouldn't be doing this, so.
This is more personal.
All any time is important.
Had a general officer one time, didn't like signing all those certificates of commendation and all that stuff personally. So, he has to go out and, uh, in the management office and buy one of those that would put his signature on stuff right where we can transfer it over. He kept pretty tight control of his checkbook after we got that machine.
Auditors are very picky about how signatures are handled in the court. While that's why we've been upgrading health pro software, we still have to have the signature pads. We can't, we could not store a digital signature to just the court. That was the auditor, not us.
There's always something. I bet at the charter school, she was using electronic signatures to go up to government, right?
Hey, Damon, is there, just out of curiosity, anything else on the city negotiation on dating's fine attorney?
Well, we come in agreement, uh, Troy and I talked and I kinda dropped the ball on getting back to them and you draw it up and sort it too. So, I guess that's what typically happens. I thought we did it. So, uh, they agreed to our terms?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for helping us out on that. Well, I do.
They go here.
Here's the cabinet.
Election more in line. It's just this chairman right here. Oh, and my gosh, you don't have a phone. How will you live without this picture?
I'll send it to you.
Alcoholics beverage.
Molly, then I'll take a picture.
Our RT guy will take your, uh...
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I was $3.90. Got a picture for you, bro.
That was sexting during the commissioners meeting.
Make a wish on the jury.
It probably won't be as good as yours.
I'll send it to you.
I appreciate that.
And with that, we're done with consent.
I'll wait till Marvin gets done, then I'll...
Thanks, sir. I'm almost there.
I'm busy sending my friend a message here.
You sent it to my MySpace.
You're gonna get it the way you get it. If you can get it.
I'll take it back to the office print. He's gonna mail it to you.
Wonder if old Tom at MySpace would be blocking posts like Facebook and Twitter.
Depends if he's, to his advantage.
Depends on who's paying.
At least with Tom, you always have a friend. You don't see old Zuckerberg as your friend.
You get it? Oh, you don't have time. I'm sure that thing's hanging off.
So, maybe I missed the story, but, um...
I came in to, and I didn't have my hotspot because we've been using it at my house 'cause AT&amp;T's not good, but Verizon's good. I left it there and I left my phone on the charger.
Oh, I see. So, we're not... It wasn't like a- a tree limb fell on your phone and your chainsaw cut it, cut it through it?
No, no.
While your wife was operating the chainsaw?
And now we, now I can't upload the video.
That's great. Just...
Sometimes it comes nice enough to have a cellphone.
I- I heard all of his friends helping him out the other day on social media, so...
Bully, bully what it is. I like bullies.
I've seen a few of them and I think you're right. One of them bullies holes rock for the county.
I don't know what Jeff you're talking about, but he, uh, flirting.
I think Jeff's the one that's defending him.
Yeah.
Yeah. He- he captures rescue.
Yeah.
Against the other bullies. Move with you, or a second.
I'll- I'll move that we approve.
Yeah, a second, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration possible action approved claims.
I'm against claims.
One DA's Matt Harder telling you. I tell you here.
I can't say nothing until I see all of them.
Well, that's good.
Uh-oh. $18.27.
Big one.
Yeah. Hey, get the penny over.
Over's over. Big one.
Thank you again. Thank you again.
Good tires.
How about SO?
Oh, don't have fun.
Wow, a $1,000 missis. She's doing it. Hey.
Can support the meeting?
I can't support that one, can I? That's it on claims?
That's it for claims. Think he's done down there yet.
I might for real get a chance to look at them.
Sure. Do you have a clue why we went over on that quaffa? Rock thing? That's one I go question about. Seems significant.
I've seen it in the past. Sometimes they put their own PO numbers on it and it makes it appear to be over and they just put their own PO number on it.
Well, I mean, it looks to me like mostly put up too much rock.
Well, Marvin, my guess is that there wasn't enough rock in Cumberland maybe that went on to that project. I don't know your project tickets to know if the right tickets. There was only 700 tons put on in Cumberland. So did it end up taking more than 700 on this project?
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I don't know.
I mean, if... I guess they charged us for more than 700 tons.
You have tickets for, give me one second, I'll be able to tell you.
That was two seconds, well.
While she's down there, can we do comments, announcements by the board?
Don't forget you also have an addendum.
We do.
There you have it, addendum. Okay. Uh, addendum one, consideration possible action approved resolution accepting $1,700 donation from William Fams, District Number Three for general purposes.
Also have P card, by the way.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have the... Consideration...
Huh? That resolution we need to sign.
Yeah. This is the... There you are. And we have consideration possible action improving purchase card payments for October 2020.
700 tons for 789 tons. So it's over 89 tons.
Ah, okay. Wonder if I'm gonna have to hit on the nose of the ruler on that one. Truck driver.
I'll make a motion we approve the P card payment.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We had a truck driver. Did we, uh...
Oh, that's who I hit on the nose.
I, no, he's too big a fella. Maybe hitting on the nose.
All right.
Did we get a motion? We got a...
We, okay, I'll make a motion we approve the claims.
Yeah, claims? I thought we did that.
Well, we didn't because she was figuring.
All right, I said a couple in front of it.
He second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear. Sorry.
I think we already signed.
P card?
Got you.
P card.
You've done that.
We just did that.
All right.
All right. Any citizen desiring?
Did we vote on it? I called for the vote.
Yeah.
I forgot.
I was too slow for you.
There we go.
All right, any citizen desiring to be heard? Not here yet. You wanna introduce yourself to the sheriff and everybody?
Hi everyone. My name's Andy Turner. I'm the new Ag 4H agent. I'm excited to be here.
Hi, Andy.
You need anything, give me a holler. I'll do my best.
So, are, are, do you work with the marksmanship program as well? 4H marksmanship?
Yes, I will. I don't know a lot, but I'll get there. We are, my, the person in the position prior to me was the coordinator and he is not, and... So we are able to continue with the group that we have in place. And as soon as they host the training for a coordinator, we will have one in place and get some new, a new round of kiddos coming through and all those good things.
I know you all have had some great success in the past with that program there, so wish you the best of luck in that. And if there's anything that we can do to help, uh, give me a call. I know a lot of, uh, all guys that have lots of bullets saved up and wouldn't mind donating some to the, to the marksmanship program. Y'all use a lot of 22 ammo, I know that, when you're, when you're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me come today.
Uh, are we good with the comments, announcements, questions by the board? The only thing I got is my offer. My shop will be open Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00 for the brush dumping and that's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, kind of a ditto there. We're gonna, I'm gonna get back and talk with my folks at the shop and we're gonna try and figure out how to keep ours open this Saturday and maybe next, uh, as well. Uh, but it'll be put on the website. Uh, we'll get with Troy and have that all, all put on there as well as this statement that I read earlier. That's all I've got.
District Two is kind of hamstrung, so we're still working on getting something going. All right then, consideration possible action on...
So move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.